All right, I'd like to call to order tonight's El Dorado City Commission regular meeting for May eighteenth, two thousand and twenty. Roll call, please.
Mayor Young.
Present.
Commissioner Guthrie.
Here.
Commissioner Lewis.
Here.
Commissioner Badway.
Here.
Commissioner Wilk.
Present.
I'll offer an invocation for tonight, please, Barry Hitz. Dear Lord, please continue to shower your blessings upon our community. Please be with us tonight as we try to make some decisions for the betterment of our community and all those members in our community. Also, please continue to bless our first responders and those people on the front lines, as well as all of our essential workers that are now hopefully getting back to work and opening some businesses back up. Please continue to bless our community, our state, and our country as we move forward. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
You guys can raise, join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Really looking forward to getting our meetings rolling back to normal so we can have some kids here helping us with the pledge of allegiance. We can invite some local pastors back in. I'm anxious for that to happen, so. No proclamations or recognitions tonight. No personal appearances tonight. Is that accurate, Tabitha, no personal appearances on the agenda? Do we have any public comments that were sent in? Just a reminder to the public out there, currently in an effort to comply with Governor Kelly's executive order number twenty dash fourteen, temporarily prohibiting mass gatherings of ten or more people to limit the spread of COVID- nineteen. The city has temporarily suspended the opportunity for public comments during the city commission meetings in person. Citizens with information for the city commission are encouraged to contact City Clerk Tabitha Sharp at three one six, three two one, nine one zero zero for instructions on alternative ways of communicating with the city commission. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move that the consent agenda as presented be approved.
If a motion is second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh. Old business, we're gonna dive right into new business. Agenda item number ten, award of bid for project number five six four, Flint Creek Estates Watermane Project.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is the Watermane Project, the surf thirty-two single-family homes in the Flint Creek Estates addition, which is located just to the east of Norris Drive and south of Sixth Avenue. We've worked on that project through the plating process over the last number of months. Dirt is being moved out there today. The developer is gonna go ahead and construct the road, put in the storm sewer system and the sanitary sewer. The portion of this project the City of El Dorado is responsible for is the water mains. So we held a bid opening last week on this, and your low bid was Noah construction at fifty-nine thousand, six hundred forty-five dollars.
So the original estimate of one twenty-two, which is the estimate, the bid came in at fifty-nine, six forty-five is what you're saying?
My estimate was eighty-five thousand, one hundred eighty dollars. So you'll see that on the bid tab. Included in that are contingencies, engineering refunds, things of that nature.
I got you. Yeah, I got you. So I guess just to bring everybody back up to speed that's watching, all of our viewers at home, this is the Flint Creek Estates addition, out on the west side of town, thirty-two new homes. What, when's the estimated completion date for that whole project to get those homes done?
Twenty twenty-one, actually. The spring of twenty twenty-one, they wanna have everything wrapped up, all the homes built, so they've got a very quick progressive schedule ahead of them.
That's awesome.
Moving right along.
I think it's a great project, bringing some new single-family homes to town, finally getting something done with that land out there, so. Do we have a motion on this bid project, bid for this project?
I move that since Noah construction has submitted the lowest and best bid of fifty-nine thousand, six hundred forty-five dollars for project number five six four, the city manager be directed to award the contract to said contractor, providing that the company furnishes the proper bonds.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Do you all have any further discussion or questions about this before we vote? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh. Next on the agenda, the award of the bid for project number five six five, melon overlay of South Haberhill Road from Central Avenue to Towanda Avenue.
Yes, this will be a two-inch melon overlay of the existing asphalt road of Haberhill, along with new pavement marking. We did have a bid opening. APAC Kansas was the low bidder at one hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-six cents. This project will be funded by sales tax dollars, street sales tax dollars.
Will this include the intersection at Towanda and Haberhill?
There is concrete repair in that intersection as part of this as well. It won't be a complete tear out of the whole intersection. We're focusing on the concrete joints that were already displaced in areas and doing some removal and concrete replacement.
Do I have a motion on this?
I move that APAC Kansas Inc. has submitted the lowest bid of one hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and fifty-six cents for project number five sixty-five. The city manager be directed to award the contractor, said contractor, providing that the company furnishes the proper bonds.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Do you all have any questions? I've got one quick question. What's the timeline on this project? And I'm gonna have, just so you guys, just so you know, Scott, I'll have that question for each of these next agenda items, see what the timeline is. Expected completion date for this?
Once we get the contract in place, we'll sit down with the contractor and talk about when they're gonna start. There is, in the contract, there is they have to be completed by, no later than October thirtieth.
October thirtieth, yes, sure.
So it definitely won't spread out that long or anything. It's really, at that point, we've dated signs of contract, we get all the bonds, and then let us know how we fit in our schedule.
Trying to get that done before school.
It'd be great if we could get that done before school starts on.
I think that's probably the most important thing I can think of on that road.
Yeah, 'cause it'll impact.
Because of October.
We've got businesses, we've got the stadium, and we've got school out there, so. As we prioritize these, I just hope that the city staff keeps that in mind in the conversations with contractors. Any other questions, guys? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh. Agenda item number twelve, a board of, award of bid project for number five six six, melon overlay of Gentry Lane, Wedgewood Drive, Chelsea Drive, Dragonfly Drive, Plover Court, and El Dorado Activity Center parking lot.
Yeah, same thing on this, melon overlay of these streets. The city streets on this list have not been addressed with sales tax dollars since they were originally constructed. Their need is rehabilitation. This project also includes the melon overlay of the Activity Center parking lot, which is the east side of El Dorado High School. Part of our agreement with U S D four ninety is half the maintenance cost on that parking lot. So they will be responsible for fifty percent of the final cost on that parking lot.
Of the parking lot, please.
Yeah, and the city will pay the other fifty percent. Sales tax dollars will also be utilized to fund this. APAC Kansas submitted the lowest and best bid, one hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and four cents.
How much is the school's gonna be on the hook for?
I don't know, I wish I had that. I don't have that right in front of me. I can get that. Their board did discuss this last Tuesday evening and decided to proceed. I did not have the breakdown between the Activity Center and the Activity Center.
It's not going to be one hundred and forty-nine thousand for theirs?
So the one hundred and forty-nine thousand is the total bid for the whole project, so the parking lot gets peeled out of that, and half of that cost is what you're gonna pay. Again, timeline here.
August first is the completion date on the parking lot.
Good. All right, do I have a motion?
I move that since APAC Kansas Inc. has submitted the lowest and best bid of one hundred and forty-nine thousand, four hundred and seventy-seven dollars and four cents for project number five six six, the city manager be directed to award the contract to said contractor, providing that the company furnishes the proper bonds.
Second.
I have a motion in a couple of seconds. Any further discussion, any questions?
So with this, you've spent roughly four hundred thousand of the six hundred thousand for this year with this? I mean, it's like three ninety-three, doing the math. So we're...
Of the five hundred.
The six hundred.
The way we look, there is six hundred, a thousand, a hundred thousand of that for preventative maintenance.
Oh, okay, okay.
So you'll see that as your seal codes, your cracked ceiling, and then we utilize five hundred thousand of that for major rehab.
Okay, so you have a hundred thousand dollars left over in the kitty for this year. What, where are you thinking, what are you thinking you're gonna do with that?
We're not done yet. And there are no...
Well, no, but the total is, the total is three ninety-three.
And as you can see, you know, going into this, looking at what I think it's gonna cost, and that wide spectrum of bids, we have really, really good bids on this. So at times in the past, we've found things come up and added work to this to make up that gap. There is, there is those funds that are kicked over back into the fund, they're utilized along down the road.
Where is that fund at right now?
I don't have that off the top of my head. Does anyone know? I guess I should have brought that. It's something we can get you.
I'm just trying to gather information, just trying to understand the process, so. Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'd like to, I'd just be curious.
That's a good question, yeah. Any other questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh. And agenda item number three, award of bid project number five six seven, melon overlay of North Taylor Street from Sixth Street to Tenth Avenue.
Yes, a two-inch melon overlay again on North Taylor Street. APAC Kansas was low bid at eighty-three thousand, one hundred eighty-nine dollars and fifty cents.
Have a motion?
I move that since APAC Kansas Incorporated has submitted the lowest and best bid of eighty-three thousand, one hundred eighty-nine dollars and fifty cents for project number five sixty-seven, the city manager be directed to award the contract to said contractor, providing that the company furnishes the proper bonds.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any questions? I've got a couple, real quick. Again, the question about timelines, any idea what this is gonna look like?
October thirtieth, I mean. The fact that APAC Kansas has got all three of these projects, they're gonna be in town once, I imagine, and then on...
So their, the goal then is to get the previous one, the parking lot at the high school done before, or by August first, and then everything else will kind of work around that, too. Okay. And when, how, when we do these two-inch melon overlays, so when was the last time that we worked on North Taylor from sixth to tenth? I mean, how, I know the traffic volume makes a difference, but how long do these, this melon, does this melon overlay last on these roads?
It's kind of dependent on the subgrade and makeup of the road. Most of these, like Wedgewood and Gentry, you know, are thirty-plus years old and haven't had anything done to them. Something like Taylor's gonna last quite a long while. There, in my almost twenty years with the city, there hasn't been any roads that I can think that we've gone back and redone that we've had since I've been here, except for like Main and Central, very high-traffic roads. You know, like Sixth Avenue's been redone a couple times. Generally, once you get into the residential areas, twenty-plus years.
Good, okay.
With preventative maintenance, you know, seal codes getting done, cracks getting sealed up, it's gonna last a long time.
Well, thirty years on Dragonfly, but I mean, how much traffic does that road actually have?
Particularly in the damage, the damage in there is the environment.
Right.
So it's sun beaten for that many years, the rain and...
Why did we stop at Tenth Street on Taylor?
Because we've had a previous project from Tenth on.
Tenth North, yeah, okay.
Okay, I mean, I knew it was nicer down there, but I wasn't sure why that was chosen.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries five oh. So now, some items for discussion for tonight. We've got, it looks like five items on the agenda for discussion, so we'll start off with number fourteen, the July fourth fireworks display.
So it may be only May eighteenth, but July fourth, we'll be here before you know it. So because we have a limited number of meetings between here and there, we can't even begin to plan for July fourth. And so the big question that always comes up every year for July fourth is where do we wanna have the fireworks display? Generally, I've heard three locations since I've been here, BG Stadium, The Lake, and McDonald Stadium. So I'm sure there's probably others. The mayor and I were talking earlier, and he'd mentioned that Prairie Trails at one point in time, they'd done at least one shooting off there. So it's not to say that those are the only three, but those are the three that get spoken about more often than not, I guess. So the question would be for the commission, where, which location would you prefer? So we can kind of get that penciled in and get that kind of planned out.
Commissioner Wilk, it's India, any thoughts?
Mayor Young, I don't like fireworks. But that's nothing new that you've heard from me before.
That's the reason I went to you first.
Yeah, thank you. We've never done it at BG Stadium. That might be interesting.
We did in two thousand and twelve, the first year we were, right before we opened.
Well, in two thousand and twelve, I was...
Right.
Someplace else.
Yeah, I mean, that's a different time. Yeah, we were, we were looking at, like, that was the only time, it was the year that we opened.
Okay, well, see, I would have totally, absolutely missed that one. How did it go?
You know, it went pretty good. They, the fireworks were shot off over, what, that'd be north and, north and east of the stadium a little bit, kind of over there, we're disc golf courses now. Stadium was pretty full, we had people in the parking lot, and we had people inside the stadium. I mean, I didn't need to be on the bleachers.
Were the kids allowed to play, be on the astroturf field?
I don't think so at the time. That was the year that we opened, so July, it was brand-new. I mean, I don't even know that all of the construction on the field and stuff was done yet at that point. I'm not, I can't remember, but I doubt it. I'm pretty sure it was...
Well, see, that's what's kind of nice about McDonald Stadium, is the kids love to go out on the field and run the bases and, you know, be kids.
Sure, I agree.
Well, they couldn't go out on the football field.
Yes, I mean, I don't know that they could or couldn't, I mean, that'd be a question for the sports authority, but I would say that access is a little bit different, right? So I mean, at McDonald Stadium, you can just kind of walk right out, or at BG, you kind of have to go around to get there. I mean, there's not access directly from the stadium.
Less seating space at McDonald's than there is at BG. And how long's it been since we've been to The Lake? It's been a while, hasn't it?
Been a while. About four years, four or five years.
This would be the fourth year, I think.
I don't know that I have a preference.
Okay, I'm just curious. I wanna go to you first, 'cause I know of your love for fireworks, so.
Okay.
Nick?
I don't know, it doesn't matter to me. Whatever the group wants to do, I'm cool with it.
Greg?
I would prefer The Lake.
Matt, do you have any thoughts?
I like the baseball stadium. I like, I like the fact that it, it's in town, kids can ride their bikes, I think you have four more kids, you'll have four more kids at the event, and it fills the stadium for the Broncos, which is something that we invest money in every year.
Are we going to assume they have a game that...
Well, we haven't confirmed with, with them. I mean, their schedule is still kind of in flux right now, trying to figure this out. Generally speaking, they've, I mean, for the last three years, they've had a game on the fourth, so I don't know. I mean, with, with the COVID schedule, I know that they're trying to get their season going, so.
Yeah, I read the email.
You know, my opinion is, I mean, I've always enjoyed the fireworks at The Lake. I enjoyed them when we had it out at the, out at Prairie Trails that one year, I enjoyed them when we had it at BG, and I enjoy them down at the stadium. I love fireworks. But, you know, I think for me, there's just something to be said about the opportunity to have it at McDonald Stadium, where to Matt's point, kids can ride their bike down there, it's easy, easy access for families. You know, even when we've had it there the last three years, the stadium hasn't, and not all the people there were necessarily in the Broncos game, right? The parking lot over by the four-H stalls over there, the parking lot filled up. To your point, Kendra, the kids getting out on the field, it's just, again, it's an opportunity to get the community together, and it's, they're all right there in one spot and be able to really enjoy it. The other thing that I like about the, doing it at MAC is that it is close, it's in town. People, even if they can't necessarily make it down there, that live in El Dorado or citizens have the opportunity to hear it and see it. So, I mean, my preference, my preference would be just for the access to our citizens, except, you know, the best, in my opinion, the best accessibility to our citizens is gonna be at MAC.
And we don't have, we don't have any partners we have to, we have to worry about with that, like the football stadium. Like, we, the EF ABC could tell us to go kick rocks, you can't have people on the field.
Which is part of the fun of MAC Stadium.
I mean, I would love to see people in their chairs, out on the field, watching fireworks. That's what I would envision happening there, but I don't know if they'll let us.
Just need a good old-fashioned ice cream social to go along with it. Drive it made.
And I think personally, when, when you go to The Lake, you don't have that centralized place for the town to come together. I mean, and I, I mean, I'm in the parking lot. I have, I get my spot early before the game even starts, and I'm out there drilling hot dogs, and that place fills up, and you get to meet your neighbors. And I still, I never get that feeling when it's been at The Lake, personally.
So...
That's two, one.
It really doesn't matter to me.
Kendra just said McDonald Stadium.
Did you?
Yeah. I mean, I, you know, I, yeah.
That's all you need.
I mean, I enjoyed it, and I've actually been down to them, you know, with, with the grandkids, and built plays of Chicken Dance.
I did.
And the grandkids loved that. And aside from being way too loud, it was enjoyable at MAC Stadium.
Are you guys all good with doing it at MAC and trying to, I mean, I think with, with what's happened with COVID and our social distancing, you know, we've struggled with businesses, or small businesses downtown, I think it's an opportunity to really try and get as much tra, bring some traffic back downtown here as much as we can. And I would encourage our city staff personally to reach out to our downtown businesses and see what, find some ways that maybe they can participate, too. And let's see if somebody wants to put on an ice cream social over at it.
Now, if the Broncos don't end up having a season, we can still do it at the stadium, right?
Sure, I mean, we have a key. We can get people in.
We can tailgate before the...
Listen, this year, you come tailgate with me.
Okay, you're on.
Are you guys all good with that this year for MAC? All right. Agenda item number fifteen, city pool.
So the COVID world that we live in, one thing that we have to also make a decision on is the city pool. The commission kind of discussed, discussed the pool at the last meeting, and now we've gotten a little bit further along in terms of the governor's plan, and we've had some time to talk internally, and we have a plan that we believe will allow us to open the pool, still comply with CDC guidelines, and as we move along into the schedule, we'll be adaptable, so we can add more people to the pool and do those kind of things. So Kevin's here to kind of talk about that plan and get your feedback on and determine how we have best to proceed.
Mayor and Commissioners, as you know, the situation continues to be fluid. The governor's order moved opening dates of the pool to June first, so we're subject to them being moved again. Under the plan that we put together, we would plan to open the pool on June the sixth and have a six-day-a-week operation, Tuesday through Sunday, normal hours, one P M. to six P M. No outdoor swim lessons this season, and few, if any, parties to be scheduled. That could change later in the season, depending on how things move with the COVID situation. Each day, we'd separate into two sessions, one o'clock to three o'clock session, with an opening number for the first couple of weeks of about thirty swimmers per session. We would then take a thirty-minute break and clear the pool, and for a cleaning of the facility, we'd be doing cleaning during that two-hour period, but this would be a thorough cleaning in that thirty-minute window. Reopen the pool again at three thirty for another thirty swimmers until five thirty, where we'd then close and do another thorough cleaning to end the day. At this point, we have eight lifeguards who are certified, or who could get an extension to their certification. We met with them this evening. They are interested in this plan and would like to continue employment with the City of El Dorado as lifeguards. The question going forward is how many can we hire and get trained as the number would expand? The thirty swimmer limit, we can manage with eight guards, based on their varying schedules. At this point, I've not made contact with those applied to be guards that do not have the training, because I needed some direction from you, so I didn't know what I was going to talk to them about. And we've had preliminary discussion with an instructor to certify the guards. The timing will be interesting, just based on everybody's availability, but believe we can get it done by mid-June, but not until the opening. As part of this plan, recommendation would be to not open the high dive and not open the slide in the deep end of the pool. So our main slide will be open, and the low dive will be open, and all other pools would be accessible as well. That's it in a nutshell, there are some other fine-tuning details, but that's an overview.
So are they gonna have to pay for each session?
Our plan right now would be to operate the pool as a free entry, so no, no charge, one time in. So if you are, this is one of the challenges that we're still working through. In theory, people would call to reserve a spot, we'd put them on the list, they have to come no earlier than twelve forty-five for the one o'clock open. We have spots designated on the sidewalks, we maintain our distancing, get them in, check them in. We would know before the pool opened how many we have scheduled. So if there's twenty-seven, that would leave room for three walk-ups. The first three we could put in, they would be in for that period. Once they leave, whether they leave twenty minutes later or two hours later, they can return unless they're signed up for the second session. Going in and out makes it difficult, under certain circumstances, to monitor where they've been and what they've been doing to go through that process, so.
So you've got your thirty people on the list, they show up one o'clock or whatever for the session, sorry, the times. I mean, to enter that session, they have to be there at one, or if they show up at one fifteen, they're still part of that session?
They could come anytime between that and the time, yes. We would take a break, and then if people called in that morning, wanted to be in at one, we'd say, "Sorry, we're at thirty, we have spots in the second session. Sure, put me down." Then they could come three forty, or, I'm sorry, three fifteen for the three thirty opening, and be there for two hours, or as long as they choose to be there. Those from session one that wanted to go to session two, if we had spots that weren't reserved, could be readmitted at that point.
So as you are taking reservations, I see... I see this setting up a list if there becomes a need for contact tracing, that you have names, phone numbers. I mean, what all information are you going to gather?
We're going to gather what the public county health department recommends. I believe and have not had a conversation with her yet, that they'll want name, address, phone number, but I'll get that confirmed before we're ready to go.
Okay, and that's going to include any parent that comes along?
Yes, anybody that enters.
And the parent is counted as one of the thirty?
There are some guidelines that are, again, are still being developed about square footage. The challenge is if you have thirty swimmers in the water and they all get out. Now we have thirty people on the deck plus whoever came. We have a little bit of gray area at that thirty swimmer number to hopefully make that work. This is not going to be an easy, an easy summer to pull this off, but we believe we can do it. We'll just have to have some patience and understanding from the community as we work through it. It's gonna, it's gonna be some challenge.
Now, at the last meeting when you talked to us, you talked about mask usage.
Still recommended. Some pools that are planning to open are requiring them, but it's not a requirement to date from the CDC. It's a recommendation.
What about lifeguards?
Again, recommendation, not required. We'll make them available for the guards that wish to have them. It's moving, but you could ask me this question on Wednesday.
I know, I, I understand, I understand that.
That's the answer I have tonight.
One of, one of the things here talks about showers required before entering. Now, it's been decades since I've been to the pool. The showers in the locker rooms?
Yes. Several years ago, before my time here, I've been here fifteen years, it went from a requirement to a recommendation to shower before you enter. The, the basis behind that was chemical makeup in the pool, it should be fine. In this environment, it's highly recommended that everyone getting in the pool go through the shower before entering the water.
Is the shower the same as the pool water?
The shower is city El Dorado water without any initial pool treatments.
So that's an area that's going to have to be sanitized.
Absolutely, we'll have to sanitize it between, throughout the session, but especially in that thirty to three thirty window. That's what will be hidden part of the restrooms and the other surface that we touch.
I, I am hoping that parents understand, I'm going, I'm making an assumption, correct me. The employees of the pool are probably teenagers.
Largely.
Okay, and, and I am going to make the assumption also that there could be somebody not following the rules and it's going to be left up to this teenager to address the situation.
Or the, or the manager on duty.
Okay, so there will be somebody older?
Yes, we have really four people that are capable of managing the pool. We have our regular pool manager, we have an assistant manager who's not a teenager, is in her twenties. And then we have two recreation staff members who fill in and do the occasional, I would, both kind of wish that I was in my twenties.
So once they go beyond that front door, they can't go back in?
You can't, you can leave, you can't come back for that session. That is, even in a normal season, we've instituted a one out, one in rule. It creates a lot of havoc that doesn't need to create. In this circumstance with the concerns of, of the covid situation, the recommendation is you're in or you're out. One thing that I should point out that I didn't in my overview was we would have very little, if any, pool furniture available. That's more than we have to sanitize, uh, so if you bring your own chair.
Are you going to sanitize that before it comes in the pool area?
No, that was not the plan.
So I think, you know, I mean, I, I agree that, you know, the hopes are that we have some patience and understanding from our participants, the, the parents and, and the, and the swimmers. I think one of the best ways to foster better particip- or better patience and understanding is to make sure that we've got ample communication out there. And so, you know, I would encourage, I, I like, the, the plan looks fine. I don't like the plan, it's not like we have to do the plan, but, uh, plan, I think the plan looks fine. I just think we need to make sure we, we're figuring out how to communicate this out to everybody. You know, we ran into some, some challenges because of the timeline with Prairie Trails and getting some stuff communicated to our golfers and to the participants out there. Like we've got, you know, a hot minute here to try and get this, make sure that we're getting communication out in every form that we can to our swimmers. I also want to make sure that we're ready to, you know, kind of, that you guys are geared up to, to handle the comments or the concerns from citizens if they're constantly not able to get on the list, you know, now that this is like a VIP exclusive club or something, you gotta be on the list. If, if they're not able to get on the list, it's going to cause a problem. And so I would, you know, I would just, I would just caution, you know, someone calling and saying, I want to get my swimmer on the list for session one and session two every day for the next six weeks. You know, you guys figure that out, it's not for us to manage that, but I just, that, I could see that causing a problem if people aren't able to get on that list.
It is a concern and David and I have had a discussion about it as, as staff, about how we're going to monitor this. The intent upfront would be you can sign up for one session per day and you can sign up up to, uh, six days in advance since we're going to be open six days. But hopefully, and we're going to have to have a staff member at the pool to take those reservations. Hopefully, between the two or three staff members that would be doing that, we can kind of monitor that. That's going to be a challenge, there's no doubt, but, uh, we want everyone to have an opportunity to get.
Well, they'll, they'll know and like they're going to wear disguises or anything.
Like I said, it's not for, I mean, in my opinion, it's not for us to manage. I'm just saying that that, that's something that could, has a potential to cause, um, political concerns or, you know, some ramification that we will have to deal with. You guys get to manage all this, but I'm, 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 I'm glad that we've put a plan together to try to get the pool open and get some, get our, our youth back.
Are we doing splash parks?
We've not reached a decision on splash parks yet. They are, uh, even under more scrutiny than the swimming pool right now because of the close proximity of users in that space. At this point, I believe that there are more entities not opening splash parks than are opening splash parks. But I don't think we've made any decision or any recommendation to bring to you yet, uh, because there's still so much uncertainty about them.
That was also one of the contributing reasons why we are likely to do no entry fee, um, so that it wouldn't be a financial burden for anyone to enter the pool. It's just a matter of getting on the list and getting, getting into a session, um, knowing that the splash pads will be shut down at least for a, a little while. They're not, I, I think right now the, the way the state classifies a splash park is the same as a playground, a piece of playground equipment. And so once, and I can't remember which stage, those are allowed to be open again, but once we hit that stage, then we would go ahead and we'd do that. We'd open those up and make those available to people.
Well, I just want to say this is well thought out and you've covered just about everything that I would think about. I personally don't think we should open the pool. I don't think the state of Kansas is yet in that position number wise to do it. And more and more kids are being affected by it than they were when this first started. And I'm just, I'm just really leery, but that's how I feel.
Some of it's got to be the parents' responsibility. If they want to let their kid do it, then let them go ahead and do it. That's the way I look at it.
Can we legally?
Parents gotta be responsible.
I mean, do, is, were the playgrounds closed because of us or because of the state?
So the state guidelines state that they, they have to be closed and the city, municipalities cannot establish a, a standard that is, that, that.
Low.
Yes, so the answer is presently, we can't open them, but when we can, we, we will. The other point that I'd make is that, like, the thirty swimmer requirement that we currently have now, once the plan transitions to a larger number of gathering space and et cetera, we'll go ahead and increase that number as well. So this plan, like I mentioned, is, is kind of flexible based upon what stage or phase of the plan that we are in, in terms of implementation.
And number of guards that we have available. If we can't increase our guard numbers, we may not be able to extend the number of swimmers we allow.
And we don't, so I guess, I mean, I, I'm in agreement with, with Greg and the fact that, I mean, what's the liability on us if we, I mean, the state says we can open them, we open them?
I asked David that question.
Yeah, so this would be a recreation activity and under state law and also under Kansas toward law, um, we would be liable for incidents that happen because of, because it is a recreation, um, admitted here, recreation event, activity, if you will. And Ashlyn has, I've talked to Ashlyn about that, she's confirmed that as well.
I mean, I just, I don't know, I'm just thinking, you know, the, the thought process. I mean, I, I, I think at some point, at some point we'll kind of let parents choose if they can give their kids one. I mean, their kids are doing it anyways, most of the time at this point anyways. But I'm just thinking in the eventualality of opening up the splash park, I would be for whenever we can, we do. And, you know, if, if a mom is really concerned about that, then she doesn't have to go. And I, I don't force anybody to say, you know, to get out of their comfort zone with all of this, but.
So that's two for it?
Yeah.
I'm for it.
There you go.
Okay, I mean, I, I think, not to, not to belabor the conversation here because we've got three, but, um, you know, this, the, the governor's guidelines allows us to move to this, into this phase um, at, at this point. If the governor changes that, again, to David's point, we have to abide by whatever those executive orders are from the state. So if that, that changes, then we, we readdress it then. I think at this point, um, with the swimming pool, we can, you know, per the governor's guidelines, we can open it at the date that you, that you, that you guys have listed here. And then moving on to the splash pads later, I, I would hope that you guys would be able, be able to bring in thoughts or, you know, ideas about splash pads when that time approaches as well, so. You got your three? Four?
So the question on splash pads and playground equipment is that the commission's desire that once we have the green light from the state, go ahead and open them. I would hate to, depending on the timing, it could be such that we have to wait two weeks.
Yeah, no, I mean, from my, I guess that's why I was saying what I was saying there, you know, we're following the, the governor's, the, the state's guy, the state's guidance here. Um, when they, when, when they say, go ahead, I'm not, I'm not personally, and it's, I'm, I'm one, one of five, but I'm not going to implement stricter guidelines than what the state has given us at this point.
I agree.
Yep.
And you would close it around August eighth too?
Uh, the pool, that's the plan right now.
I mean, your splash parks, will they close at the same time?
If we're, if we phased out, we typically keep those splash pads open until late September or early October. That would be the plan going forward.
Okay, uh, next item.
Next, Kevin.
Thank you. City pool, oh no, softball, baseball, we just talked about city pool, sorry. Softball, baseball.
Last week, the Wichita Heights Junior Baseball Softball League Board met and the vote was to cancel the Heights League season for two thousand twenty. So with that, there will be no baseball and softball as we've done the past several years. If it's the desire of the commission, offer an El Dorado program for those teams that are registered through El Dorado and have a T-ball machine pitch program for the community. It would be a shortened season, probably a four game season in order to get proper spacing in our facilities. Uh, try to limit fields to one game per night. There's a whole laundry list of things. When we developed a potential plan, if Heights canceled, we had a June one start date for practices. That would still fit if we get to that point in phase two. The governor's ordered last week, kind of brings that into question a bit, that we would still meet that criteria and start practices. For the T-ball machine pitch, a June eight start for practicing since those, uh, players have not registered yet. We would limit the number of practices on our fields per night and try to begin games somewhere around June the twenty-seventh with completion date honor around July the twenty-third. We would have to play a few games on Saturday mornings. We're thinking about T-ball, um, a little cooler in the morning. We would have spaces available to get games in, get people in and out before it got hot later in the day. We would have limited players in the dugout. We would have spaces marked down each line that are six feet apart for the remaining players to stand. We would limit the number of spectators at least initially to two per player. Some debate internally about whether to remove the bleachers completely or to mark them appropriately for seating. So still some things to work through there. We would have to disinfect equipment nightly, so we would encourage those that play to bring their own equipment that they, and they alone use. We know that's not possible for everyone, so we have equipment available. We would then check out on game night, get back after the game, do a sanitation process on those so they'd be ready to go the next night. We might have to adjust some rules a little bit, still kind of talking through that. So, again, we could provide some sort of baseball and softball potentially depending on the next order from the governor. But it would be a definite, um, shortened season. And with a reduced fee, our intention would be for this to be ten dollars across the board for four games. So there would be some refunds that we would issue to those that have already registered for Heights League if they can wish to continue to play this way. We'd issue some refunds there and then have a ten dollar charge for those in T-ball machine pitch that are getting ready to register. Again, lots of things to work through. It won't be easy. But it is a way to offer, potentially offer baseball and softball. We'd limit to one umpire on the field, working near the pitcher's mound. Just lots of, lots of challenges, but something we believe we can do.
What, what do you anticipate? I know that it's, it's just kind of a guess, but at this point, but what do you anticipate the participation numbers to be? How many teams do you think you get?
We, we looked at approximately twenty-four teams at all age levels as we were kind of putting a mock-up schedule together of how this would look, so somewhere in the twenty to twenty-four range. We would have to contact everyone that registered for Heights to see if they're interested in doing this. We've not done that yet because we need some direction. And then open up a T-ball machine pitch registration period before we really accurately know those numbers, but that's our guess for the mock-up that we did.
Do you have some flexibility to modify game schedules if you have fewer teams in one of the divisions and you can?
Yes, um, and that's something we could look at. The, one of the challenges, especially not so much with T-ball machine pitch, but with our older age groups. Uh, Heights League has two different divisions, one for a more experienced older group and one for a lesser experienced younger group. If we have to mesh them together to play, we're not sure how that's going to exactly look from a competition standpoint. How many times do we want them to play each other? How many times do we want them to play each other, those types of things? So based on just some hypothetical situations, the four-game schedule would look like something that would work. But yeah, once we have accurate numbers to work with, there could be some adjustments.
So is this just, I'm sorry, I'm dominating the conversation, I just had questions. Does this just include what we would normally consider El Dorado teams or the El Dorado rec teams? So you've got El Dorado, Blue Stems sometimes had one, Flint Hills, Circle?
Yes, the intention would be for those that were in the Heights League, those registrations had closed and teams had been formed when all of this started. So we would invite all of those participants, so that we'd include Leon and Flint Hills teams in that mix. One of the questions that we need some direction on from you, if this is something we want us to do, is how to handle the T-ball and machine pitch. Do you want to do it with the same criteria? Our usual participants in El Dorado baseball and softball, which are Blue Stems, Flint Hills, and El Dorado? That would be my recommendation, as one of the reasons that the Heights League chose not to participate this year was the travel between communities and districts. If we just opened up, we're back to kind of doing what the Heights League did, which was one of the reasons why it was voted not to participate this year. So we would need some direction.
As far as, if that's your recommendation, then I'd say go with it.
The only, I, I agree with that, with kind of this caveat. I would be curious what we do with those kids that live in El Dorado that normally would have been on a Circle, maybe a Circle or Towanda Heights League team, a Circle Heights League team, if we, if, if we're able to accommodate Circles since we have those kids in that school district in our city.
In the T-ball and machine pitch, I mean, the, those that resided in El Dorado absolutely can be included. It's how far do you want to expand that border? And again, nothing against our friends in Towanda and Benton, but if you want to open that up, they were going to have their own internal league like we're discussing.
Oh, they are, okay.
They were, we heard over the weekend that they're not going to do that now. So they have concerns.
Well, but we can't change what we're doing in the middle of the, middle of our planning because somebody else decided to go another direction. I mean, I'd say you stick with what you had planned and, and go. And, you know, you can't, well, okay, now they're not going to do this, we gotta do this. Now they're not going to do this, we gotta do that. We can't do that. I'd just take your plan, your original plan, go with it.
Our original plan was for the older age groups to offer to everyone that had registered and signed up, and for T-ball machine pitch to, again, allow Flint Hills and Blue Stems who regularly play in our community and anyone within the city limits in El Dorado. So that would incorporate.
Okay. It works for me.
Yeah.
I find this probably harder to follow protocol than the swimming pool.
It could be that way. We have concerns about how it's going to.
Yes, I, I can see a lot of concerns.
We're going to need some cooperation from the public that wishes to attend those games to help us so that we don't have the staff or the desire or the capability to be the social distance employees. And that's, that's one of our biggest concerns.
So I don't, I'm not for it.
Again, we're going to have to comply with the mass gathering requirements as well. If it's ninety, we're going to have to try to figure out how we schedule those things so we don't get ninety people in close proximity. So we've taken two or three steps in a mock schedule, and I'm not going to tell you that it's accurate yet, but we've got some framework to work with it.
And if Broncos scuttle, and if they're playing, we could do Fourth of July with those teams.
True.
At the big stadium, I can kind of give, I'm just.
I'd be cool with that, man.
Come in.
Okay.
I wish you luck, Kevin.
Any other questions?
Nope.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kevin.
Next item, number seventeen, auction. Auction of Prairie Trails furniture fixtures for discussion. Sorry, I'm trying to get to the top of my agenda here. Yeah, the agenda item number seventeen, auction of Prairie Trails furniture and fixtures for discussion. So David and I talked a little bit at lunch today about, about this, and we've had some contact from some people that have some interest in being, some involvement. The Prairie Trails, we had originally talked about maybe putting this on the, on the work session or study session agenda for the twenty-seventh, but it seems like some interest is growing there, potential interest. So I asked David if we could maybe talk about that tonight and how we want to approach the potential sale of Prairie Trails if we've got interested parties.
Oh, of the whole thing?
Of the whole thing.
Right, so there are a number of furniture and fixtures that could be sold off separately, but we don't know if there is a party out there that would like to buy the golf course. They may want some of that stuff, they may, they may want to use it, you know, for example, in the kitchen. There's also furniture. So without knowing really what any interested parties may or may not want, we thought it might be best to kind of strike this for now and kind of talk about a process for marketing and selling Prairie Trails. And then based on that conversation and how that goes, we may come back and talk about furniture and fixtures and have a conversation about that. There's, there's some stuff that would probably be best suited to the back of a roll-off container, to be honest with you. But, but we don't know, we don't know what someone's interest is in, in some of that fixtures. For example, in the basement specifically, there's at least one room that's just full of chairs in very states of disrepair. So, you know, somebody might not be interested in buying that stuff, but you never know. So before we put together an idea of auctioning off some of these, these, these things, it might be better to talk about a process for, for marketing the property and finding somebody that would like to buy it.
So my, my thoughts are if we have, we, because we potentially, you know, whether we have multiple interested parties now or we're going, or we're going to, I think that we need to put together standardized packet of information, that, marketing information that we can give out to somebody that's interested in looking at the golf course. I want to make sure, I, for me, I want to make sure that the information that we're providing and that we're disseminating about the golf course to an interested party or multiple interested parties is consistent. And it's, you know, accurate and consistent and everyone's getting the same, the same shot at it, same information. So my thoughts were, to, to David, were to put together kind of a marketing packet that talks about the assets out there, talks about, I mean, either the capital equipment that we have, that really lists the, the real estate, the buildings, lists the, you know, the, the golf course amenities themselves, all those things that come with the golf course. But also, and, and also list some things like, how many members we had, maybe a trend of memberships over the last couple of years and what, what that's looked like. Are there other things that you all think would, we'd benefit from, from putting into that package?
Okay, I'm completely confused. We, we had originally, same, we were wanting to look at selling, selling stuff out of the golf course.
We felt like, so my, I, I asked David if we could talk about putting that on hold because I don't want to sell something and then have somebody say, well, I was going to buy the golf course, but you sold off all the kitchen equipment.
Okay, I, I lost track there about halfway through. I thought you said you had someone wanted to buy it and then.
Buy the golf course.
Yes.
Right, but we don't want to talk about auctioning off furniture and fixture yet because we don't want to get rid of stuff, so.
Correct, I agree with that, okay.
So now, I think the que, I mean, so the, the base question is, do we want to start auctioning off furniture and fixtures right now? Or do we want to figure out what the status is of the golf course, if we can put together a marketing package?
I want to see what we got first.
Sell them, I don't want, again, I don't want to sell something and have somebody say, well, I was going to buy it, but you sold the Coke machine. Best case scenario, from my perspective, and I think that this is what we need to talk about as a commission, is, you know, if we can put together the information that's needed, and then if there are parties that are interested, I think the next step would be for David and, and staff to have a meeting with those interested, the interested parties as a group to answer additional questions. And I, it's kind of like going out to RFP, I, I just solicit proposals. As a commission, say, hey, you know, you, one person or you ten people are interested in, in buying this golf course, put together a business plan and a proposal and, and make us an offer and let us know what it's going to look like. Because there's some interest, we have interest in maintaining a golf course in El Dorado. A big concern that, that I have, and I expect you guys on the commission have this, having gone through buying a golf course, selling a golf course essentially, and then getting the golf course back.
Repaying it.
I don't want to be in a position where we're taking a golf course back over again in a couple of years, right? So we need to make sure that we've got the right buyer at the right time with the right resources as well.
Is there a reason why we don't engage a realtor?
Um, we can.
I don't know, I'm, I'm just, listen, you put great PowerPoints together, and I don't think that, that, I don't think that you putting something together is a bad thing, but, I mean, I don't, David's not, David doesn't know that world like a realtor would.
Well, but your average realtor's not, doesn't know the world.
No, 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 I'm not talking, you know, yeah, I'm not talking Bob Jones down the street. I mean, with someone that, that's, you know, does commercial property like that, I don't know. I'm, again, I don't, I don't run a, I don't have to run a city or a golf course.
Right. I, I guess from my perspective, I think there's information that, that we can put together and build a packet and just understand if there's interest out there. And then if we need to engage a consultant to help us sell the course or help us navigate through that, I think that that is an opportunity to do that. My only challenge with engaging a consultant is just someone else we're paying. And, and, you know, we, it's our desire, it's my desire, and I think our desire as a commission to recoup some money from this golf course because we had a commitment at one point for somebody to buy it. And, and as, as, as a city, we committed that money to another project. So, you know, it'd be nice, you know, I, I don't want to, just, anyway, so.
I mean, have we talked about price as to?
I, that, that's why I was thinking a realtor, like the, the things that we ask, that someone will know. Somebody's got to know that information somewhere. But I, I'm more interested, I, I am interested in trying to figure that out, yes. So we got to do whatever everybody figures is best, but yes, I feel we should do exploratory, figure out what we need to do to get rid of it so we can pay off the tennis courts.
Well, we, we definitely have, we have some people that are requesting information. And so my big, my point was, I want to make sure that we're providing consistent information across the board. So that if Tabitha requests information, she doesn't get different information from Scott and different information from David, right? I want everyone that's, that is requesting information about the golf course to be on the, on the same playing field and, and getting that information. So that was my kind of point in all this, in having David put together that informational packet. From a sales perspective or how we, we approach that, I think that's the next step. But this first step is those people that are requesting that information to gauge if they're interested in moving on to step two. I think we need to get that put together and, and, and disseminate the, the same information across the board.
Yeah, I would agree. I think there's also some questions that one could raise in terms of things, for example, like would the city be willing to give the buyer free water, for example? Or do we give them free water for a period of years? Or do we give them water up to a certain amount? Or do we say no to free water and they have to pay? So I think, I mean, we've, as Bill mentioned, or as the mayor mentioned, we've, we've had some, some inquiries about those kind of things. And I just don't want to communicate a message to a party that is not in line with what you guys are thinking as the, as the city commission. So I don't know if, if you want me to come up with a proposal and go that route or to the mayor's point, if we want folks to submit a proposal for us to consider. But if we have buyer A over here and buyer B over here, and they're proposing two different things, it's not that we can't compare those things, but we, to the, to the best of our abilities, we're going to be able to provide apples-to-apples comparisons. So that we can make sure that we're getting the best deal for the taxpayers ultimately, while also kind of meeting the other goals of the commission, which is to ensure that we have a golf course in the community. So I think there's some questions like that that would be helpful. I don't know if, I don't, so I don't know what the best way of going about it is, if it's have, make him up with some, with a, with a kind of proposal of sorts or have, have the buyers do that. Either way, we can, we can do that. We, we do that on a number of projects already. Not necessarily sell the property, but to the extent that we would do like an RFP, a request for a proposal, we could draft it in such a way that prospective buyers would submit a proposal and then the commission could weigh those, decide which ones they would like to get more information on or perhaps interview the buyers or whatever.
I don't have a problem with that. That's what my approach would be, would be more of that RFP approach in the long run, right? So we get the information out and then we, as a commission, with the city staff, with David and, and staff, work to build out what, what, what our wish list is in an, in an RFP, just like we do when we go to RFP for a consultant for something else or to get a street done. This is what we want to see an end result look like. Now, I'm asking you as the, as the buyer or as the company to tell me how you're going to, what, what your proposal is to get to that end result.
You'd have, you'd have to have a company like Insight come in here and, and sell that commercial property for you. Here's doing the Legion golf course, selling lots.
But, guys, it's not, we're not selling a piece of real estate. We're selling a business. I mean, we're, it's not like the Legion, it's not like the Lots for Sale at, out on Jason Drive. We're, you know, we're not, it's not, it's a, it's a, it's a business that they're buying into and then we need to make sure that we've got people that are buying that business that understand the business and know how to run the business so that we're not buying it back in two years. I mean, I, I, so. I just.
And I'd be more than likely to get, I'd be more likely to give perks like water for ten years, the higher the price goes.
Sure.
I mean, if someone wants to give, give me a million dollars for that, for the golf course, yeah, I'll consider it, I'll give them some.
Because you can sure put a number on that, on the water.
Absolutely.
And as far as I'm concerned, everything's on the table.
Yeah.
The only thing, in my opinion, that's non-negotiable is that First Rite of Refusal clause, if they ever sell it.
I think you guys said some really good caveats in the last go-round with, you know, with the First Rite of Refusal, that it had to remain a golf course and it had to remain accessible to the public, as a public playing golf course. I mean, you guys said some good caveats in, I don't see any reason why we wouldn't stick to that. But to your guys' point, I mean, there's nothing's off the table, but we've got to get them, we've got to see if people are willing to come to the table.
Right.
Because they need to know what the golf course is. They need to know how many holes it has, what kind of grass we have, what kind of machinery we have out there. You know, if David's going to buy the golf course, is he going to have to buy mowers as well or do we have those things? We need to structure, we talked last week or at the last meeting about this golf cart lease. You know, in, in, in preparation for potentially selling it, we need to make sure we're structuring that lease to be assignable. You know, if, if Kendra buys the golf course, she's going to want that awesome price we got on the lease so that we can just assign it to Kendra at that point instead of, you know, we don't have to maintain it. So there's those types of things that, that I would include in the informational packet. But we're not to the point right now where we're negotiating prices with people. We just need to see if people are going to come to the table.
Right.
And there's just, there's some basic golf course information to get to those people. About the course, about the, again, about, about the assets on the course, all, all of the, all of the capital assets especially, any of the machinery, all the infrastructure, and that stuff's got to get to them.
And you have all that information?
Uh, we are currently assembling what I'd call a golf course profile that would contain all of that information in a nice document that is meant to market the course and the opportunity. So we're, we're currently assembling that, just because it's, it's good information to share with folks that might be interested. We kind of anticipated, based on conversation with the commission, that there was some desire and willingness to sell the course, so we'd kind of taken that step to begin preparing that information because whether we listed it with a real estate agent or did it ourselves, that was information we were going to have anyway. Because people are going to ask those types of questions, and so we've already, we've already assembled some of that.
Now, well, they, I'm going to assume that anybody interested in buying is going to be interested in financials.
That is correct, and we, and we have that information. But what we'll do is we'll take it from the city's reporting that we use and we'll, we'll put it into a spreadsheet or a tablet that makes it look a little cleaner, but we do. Cleaner, but we do have that information, and we have, we have a trend, so we can show them over the last, um, four years or so that. How, how it was ran and what the profit or loss was.
But we have none of that from Great Life.
We do not, no, nor do I expect to get any of that from Great Life.
But, but what we, what we do know today is the number of members that we had, we know the numbers of members that were there. The last time we had it, and, and, and the previous years, so we can create the membership trends, we know what the green fees are today. The membership fees are today, we also know what the membership and green fees are, were, the Great Life was charged, and so we can extrapolate some data. To put together for, for the buyers, to let them know, you know, this is what a member shift looked like, and this is what the growth we saw in that, in those memberships, and. And so maybe the buyer can expect that type of, that type of return as well. I would just, I mean, my suggestion to the commission, my recommendation to the commission would be that we, um. Direct David or city staff to put together that marketing pack, and we kind of hold off right now and try and auction off addition, any property. Out there with the thought that maybe somebody's interested in it, they're interested, maybe they want the chairs from nineteen seventy-two that are stacked up in the basement. Maybe they don't. So. Just to gauge interest, are you guys good with that?
I'm okay with that.
I'm gonna say okay, do it.
There you go.
Okay.
All right, agenda number eighteen, water and sewer capacity studies.
Staff believes that, believes it's time to, uh, to take a closer look and look in detail some of the areas of our public infrastructure. Um, that we feel that we have some limitations in order to be better prepared for economic development opportunities. Those areas, water treatment plant, the last water treatment plant expansion was twenty-two years ago. That expansion has served us well, it took us from six NGD to eight and a half NGD. Since the water treatment, the last water treatment plant expansion, our peak flow, all-time peak flow in two thousand and eleven and, uh, or twelve and thirteen. Was around seven, seven and a half NGD. That dry spell with those peak flows kind of tested our ability, what can this plant do? What we found out at that time is there's some bottlenecks, not in the treatment plant, but in pumping the water out of the treatment plant, so the. The, uh, seventy-two expansion added more filters, the ninety-eight expansion added more basins out back. One of the things that has not been looked at that has to do with water distribution, it's getting the water pumps, so we have plenty of horsepower, and we have plenty of ability in our filters and our basins to treat water. But getting it pumped out in the system, that's where we currently have a limitation. Um, so there's some distribution piping improvements, if you think about it, the, the plant was built in nineteen thirty-seven. The piping going from the plant out as it fans out or spans out in the distribution system, it's the same size pipe as nineteen thirty-seven. And so there's some improvements there, um, and it's complicated, um. If we only need one or two NGD, um, it may not be building more basins or, or filters, it may just be piping improvements. It may be, uh, some disinfection improvements. There may be a much lower cost to get to adding one or two NGD, and then once you, um, hit that tipping point. To go more than that, now you're talking about additional filters, basins, pumps, things like that. So, if we were to have an economic development opportunity where they ask for two or three NGD, we need to know what that involves. And, uh, that's kind of what we're looking at in, in water, uh, water distribution. Getting the water out to our industrial park area, right now we have some limitations. The two thousand and nine water distribution study was followed by a, um. The West Booster Pump Station, the West Pressure Zone dramatically improved pressures on the west side of town. Dramatically improved fire flows for.
I'm sorry, the two thousand and nine water distribution study?
Yeah, two thousand and nine was the last water distribution study. And so. While that serves our needs today, if we had to get another two or three NGD out west. We've got significant improvements to get that water north and west, and as everybody knows, um. We have some pressure issues that are becoming worse in the north part of town. It's the farthest areas from a water treatment plant without a booster pump. Um, it's a little higher in elevation in some places, and so, uh. This study would also look at the potential for creating another pressure zone to the north at a booster pump station.
Is it one pipe that feeds the north?
We've got one main twelve inch that feeds a water tower, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah. Then the sewer collections master plan, um, it's hard to believe that it's been forty years since we had any significant. Infrastructure improvements, we're talking about new sewer interceptors, uh, back around nineteen eighty. And, uh, and so we're really, other than taking care of. I mean, we've had some significant improvements with, uh, lift station, Eighth Street Lift Station and the Stunt Road, the prison lift station. We've been doing some, some pipe repairs and improvements, but as far as looking at the capacity of our big interceptors, those big interceptors, everything. So all of those eight-inch pipes that are out in the neighborhoods all come back to an interceptor. And looking at what's the current capacity of those interceptors, what, how much additional capacity? Are they running eight percent full, are they running fifty percent full? Those are questions we need to answer, because those could have some significant costs if, if we add a big water customer. Um, they're also gonna be a big sewer customer. Scott, did you have anything?
And, and I'll just hit quickly on the sewer side. City did a sewer study in two thousand and four. And that study at the northeast part of town, and, and, and what that did is really gave us a handle on the inflow and infiltration. Which is what kills your sewer system, that's what causes backups, that's what costs us more money to treat the water than waste water treatment facility. And causes all the issue, so part of this is really looking at the core of our community, I mean, these hundred-year-old pipes. And how that interconnects, and actually getting in those main holes, doing flow analysis, looking at increased flow during rain events and how that's affecting our system. Uh, a lot of times, we, Kurt's guys know hotspots, uh, you know, where we have issues and we're trying to resolve those. But those are all unseen things, those are all happening underground, um, and, and so really getting a grasp and a handle of what's going on there. And water distribution is, is, like Kurt mentioned, the two thousand and nine study that focused on. The west side, the township Village area, when that annexation occurred, and how we helped those folks out, um, and, and kind of the northeast. So really, kind of envisioning that more of a brush-off of that, and then looking at transmission routing. Where in our system can we add, uh, transmission mains to help areas where we may need to do a booster pump? And, and the big one is water treatment plant, understanding those triggers. When we need to start thinking about things, when we need to start putting things in the CIP, or if Industry X comes along and says, I need this much water. We have a pretty good idea of what that cost's gonna be, uh, what those rates may look like to that customer. So, it's really, it's really, we feel like it's a good time to proceed with these. So kind of asking for your consent to proceed with, request for qualifications. And, and talk to these individuals and then kind of define a scope of what these plans may look like.
Water is the future for our growth for the community, it's a hundred and fifty thousand, it's no brainer, we need to do this study. It really is.
Yeah, I mean, if y'all think we need to do it, then I'm, I'm okay with it.
Where's the money coming from?
Uh, it'll come from both, so the water study will be paid for from, uh, the water fund, uh, fund balance, and then the sewer study will be paid for from sewer fund balance.
Okay, it's no general.
And it's there to.
I just wanted to clarify, it wasn't general fund money.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't dis, I mean, I don't disagree with this, we need to do this, it's, um, I'd, I'd hate, I'd hate to. Be in a conversation with Industry X. And have, you know, finally, finally get to that point where we bring in somebody to town and then us say, well. All right, now, let's just kind of pause on this while we go figure out how to, how we're gonna get water to you, or how we're gonna serve, you know, your sewer needs, so. Again, my, my clarification just for the public was that this wasn't general fund money, that we had money set aside for this and the water and sewer funds.
Thank you, good.
Any thoughts, Matt?
I'm ju, I'm just wondering what's next, what, 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 what other department needs a survey to do something for an industry that's not here yet?
Well, these two studies, so the, the West Industrial Park Master Plan actually called for the water and sewer studies to be done. So this is kind of the, the next step to do that. Um, unfortunately, we know a lot, but we don't, we don't know enough to develop that land over there yet. Um, I think, Scott, you could probably provide a better answer than that, but in, in our sense of.
Well, it's been two years, it's been study after study talking about this one, this, this one thing, and I'm just, I, I'd rather just, let's get it all done, who's next?
Yeah. Just bragging one?
Why, no, to your.
No trash, Matt, no trash.
To your point, Matt, I, I agree with that, and that's kind of the point I was making, I, if we're gonna do it, let's get it done, I don't wanna wait until. Industry X gets here and then have to put everything on hold and, and lose that, so let's just get it, whatever we gotta get done, let's get it done, it sounds like thi, this, so. That's a great question, Matt, what, what else, what else are you gonna come to us with?
And, 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 and like I mentioned, this isn't just for industrial, Industry X, this is looking at the core of community.
Sure.
What, how we need to program those CIPs for the future, deal with those sewer issues we're having, deal with current bottleneck issues at the water treatment facility. I, I think the big thing is in treatment capacity and forecasting that future, and when those things need to be planned, and also be prepared as. Another community comes along and says, hey, we want this water, or whatever. There, there's all different things between chemistry that could be done to add basins to, all, all different ideas that we need to.
I, I, I get it, and I underst, and I understand, I think a lot of, I, I do believe that a lot of these studies have been overdue, don't, you know. And I, and I'm not saying that it's not necessary, it's just that it, it keeps, we keep piling on top of it, one, every six months, hey, I need another study to see if there's, you know, armadillos in this. You know, it's, it's, it just continues.
Sure.
And what, I guess where I'm, I, I'm gonna point to you is, is say. What else do we need to look at?
Well.
And doesn't, I don't need an answer right now, I, I guess where I'm going with this is that, like, like, whatever else we need to do, let's get it done. Let's get it over with, so we have all the information and we can stop, stop this every six month cycle.
Yeah, so the, the mayor and I had a recent conversation, it actually was at lunchtime, and, um, as you know, we had a lot of rain the other day. And you probably had comments from the public about, you know, we need to some of that stormwater. Well, so that would probably be another one, right, that we have to come back and say, we need to study this, because. We laugh about it, but the fact is, we don't have a list of stormwater projects that are prioritized, one through ten. And this is how much it's gonna cost, and this is what it'll do, and this is the downstream impact, and, um, a lot of cities have those plans already done, and we don't. We don't have a water study, we don't have a sewer study, we don't have a stormwater study, so if you take all of the major infrastructure that we own, and you just go through them, that's what we're talking about. Luckily, the city has actually done a, a street or road study, so we have a rough alignment of how that northwest trafficway. Uh, will connect up on the north end of town, so we, we kind of have a general idea of what that looks like, so the good news is, we have that one done. But in terms of the others, we need to do those because we need to understand, um, you know, what future development may hold. But also what we need to do today, what planning we need to do, start doing today to make our system better for existing customers. Um, and that could be the bottlenecks, the pressure zones, all of these things are needs that have been identified, that, hey, we need to do something about that. But until we understand how that connects up with the rest of the system, it's gonna be very difficult to make those CIP project lists that we need to do. And then once we have that, then you take those priorities and plan them in your ten-year capital improvement plan, and there you go, then you start implementing them and putting that money to work, so. Water, sewer, stormwater, luckily, trash doesn't need one, we don't have electric utility, we don't have a gas utility, so really, once you get those three done, you'll be looking pretty good.
So stormwater is, and storm sewer is not on this list?
That's correct, so when we say sewer, we really mean sanitary sewer.
Okay.
And this was one of the things we talked about as goals for the year.
Infrastructure.
Yeah, we did, we did talk about that.
So is that not your, is storm sewer not you, is that you?
Partially.
Partially.
So, so we've, we've done a, um, we've got, we've got a master plan of the storm sewer for our core of our community. And, um, coming out of that is only a couple of projects, and those are big ones, that you see in your CIP. And that would be tearing up central and, and putting storm sewer in, we started this discussion with KOD about being heavily involved in the cost of that. Out of that came a couple of projects that you, you saw some, some try to, some projects to try to lessen the impact.
Porting, is what you're talking about, is porting?
And, and, and stormwater is a tough one, cause it is, is, um. You know, a, a standard that you may design a street to be able to handle, or storm sewer inlands or system is what is called a ten-year event. And you, you hope that all of your water is contained within the road right away in what they call a, a hundred-year event, which is, has a one percent chance of happening. So, it's tough, I mean, it's kind of, you could build a system and spend millions upon millions and millions of dollars.
Right.
To, um, plan for a storm that may impact you, who knows when, that's protecting, um, if, you know, facilities that are only worth X. So, as a community, as a commission, have to make those decisions.
So is the storm sewer survey in the, on the horizon?
So there's probably parts of that that we, sort of like Scott mentioned, the current study we have is downtown is the core. So there's a number, and the core obviously flooded, um, this, this past weekend, but there were a number of other streets that flooded as well, we, we've noticed there's. Problems up on Main and McCollum, for example, there's, um, Twelfth and Taylor, I think flooded, there was some flooding on, um.
Kansas, Washington.
Sixth Street near Summit, or, no, Orchard, yeah, so these, these spots are all over the place, and I don't know as though there's. A full comprehensive study of all of that, uh, but we do have a downtown study. The problem is that, that study, or that, that project, that one project from downtown would cost a million bucks, a little over a million bucks to put in, and that's, that's one project. And if you bought it, you've got one project for ten years, there's no, so we gotta figure out, you know. What all these other projects are, prioritize that list and figure out what that looks like from a, from a standpoint of how do you implement it and, and what do you do? Because if we did one project in downtown and told the public, you're not getting another project for ten years, I don't know as though that's gonna be a realistic way of approaching the, the subject, because downtown is not the other place that floods, floods.
Right.
Now, and that situation was a pretty significant rain event, I don't know if it was a five-hundred-year storm or not, um, but. Um, there are smaller rains that have, have equally pressing flooding issues throughout town, so. It's, it's difficult because now as a commission, you have to weigh, you know, do we do this project over that project? They both flood and they both could cause damage to private property and, um, you know, they create safety issues and, and all that stuff, so. Um, I think it's important for us to have a list of all those projects, so that you guys can have a conversation about which project we do.
But I would say we can't get the list of that unless we do a comprehensive citywide stormwater study and understand what that list looks like. We've got our list for the core, you guys have put that together.
Yeah, I mean, and, and when the stormwater utility was created, um. There's projects that were looked at, and, and David and I will visit here after this, and knowing that this is something you all may be interested in. And we can go through some of that old work and, and talk about the reason, the creation of the utility, and kind of looking at some protocol for projects.
I just, I, I keep, I just keep hearing that we, we have gaps in our information, and we keep coming up with surveys and, and whatnot. And what I'd like to say is, I guess where I'm at is, let's get them done, so we get the information together, so. When the five of us are no longer up here, those people can go, okay, well, they did this, and we're ready to go to work, blah, blah, blah.
Right.
So.
So when they approved Haverhill in front of the college. Will that take the drains away from the the college property was had Haverhill completely covered all the way to BG Stadium. All the way past the college, it was flooded. And I was surprised it didn't flow back into the college. It was. It was poured off the college's property onto.
On the road.
Onto the road. And it was that deep.
Yeah, it was that deep a lot of places, yeah. And and a lot of times, there's no practical solution.
But when they did the improvement to.
I mean, I. Yeah, maybe. I mean, I I don't know that there's any way. I mean, look, we had we had four inches of rain in forty five minutes. I don't. Or three point nine inches of rain in forty five minutes. I don't we 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 can't afford to put a stormwater or a storm si- storm water system in place that handles that.
There there is an engineering, there's an engineered solution to that, but you don't wanna pay for it. I mean, I can tell you right now, you do not wanna pay for that.
That was something I've never seen before.
The big thing, you know, unfortunately, events like that, you really focused on, okay. Where did water affect private property and structure? How can that be resolved? Where did it cause a safety issue for the traveling public? Because a lot of those roads are designed and that system's designed to pond water, you know. And and have those outside lanes and that gutter run completely full just because of the cost associated. Storm sewer pipes gets very bit, gets very costly. And a lot of times, depending on where you're at, there's nowhere to put that water, you know?
I never would have thought your admin house would have become a dam from the water flowing down and pouring out and right up to your house. Created a lake.
I can I saw water in places I haven't seen water before.
Alright, agenda item number nineteen, City Commission and Advisory Board Updates. Commissioner Wilkinson.
I wanna compliment the city and the city employees uh during this COVID nineteen. And those that have continued working and those that have come back to work. I think you have done an awesome job for the city of El Dorado, and I compliment you on that. And I thank you very much. Uh I also think we did a fantastic job during all that rain. I mean, when I went out, I couldn't even see my backyard. It was just solid water, and I'd never ever seen that before. And looked out the front door, couldn't even see across the street. So that was definitely a one in, let's see, over seventy year event. But uh I compliment the city for the work they did there also and for the water rescues that they had to perform. Uh because of the influx of water, so. We have a great city staff. We have a great community, and we're just gonna keep plugging along.
I agree.
Library board had one of those virtual meetings Monday. It was fun. I participated kinda. I uh they could hear me, but they couldn't see me. And my wife was, she works from home. She was doing some webinar thing, so I couldn't ask her. So I was scared to touch it. So they just they just li- they could hear me. But their phase three, I guess, started today. Reduced staff in the facility during limited library hours. Staff will work staggered shifts. Shifts will be four hours and strictly enforced. Eating will not be allowed in the building. This is all for staff. Masks must be worn by staff when working closer than six feet apart and when delivering items to patrons. Somehow building services will resume. I actually used it today. I had a couple of books on hold. Went up to the library. I called them, sat in my truck, they brought it up to me. It's cool as hell. If you want, you can only return a book through the book drop. Because they said seventy two hour quarantine and cleaning. I didn't know that crap would live that long on a book, but apparently somebody thinks it will. No donations. The canned share materials are circulating. Then phase four will be, oh, phase three will be two weeks plus or plus. Phase four will be, they think, a week long. Again, reduce staff in the facility and and uh but and in fate, but. And basically, the same thing that's going on now. I didn't really see what was. Oh, the virtual summer reading program will begin as soon as the software is ready in the phase four. In phase five, uh once they get the building ready with their sneeze guards and their furniture and stuff. They'll resume normal hours if staffing allows and allow a limited number of patrons in library at a time. They still want you to use the book drop to return stuff. And then phase six, whenever that is, uh full use and access, donations accepted. But you you'll still be able to get the curbside. If you know, if you don't wanna go in, you can still pull up, call them. And they'll you they'll bring stuff out to you, all that good stuff. So they're really. They got a great staff at the library. I mean, their morale is is high and they're uh. They every one of them, from the from the director to the little part time girls, every one of them. Just lives and breathes at that library, so. Great, great group there. That's all I got.
Greg, what do you got?
I gotta commend the city staff too for what happened in that rain event. You guys did a good job. And with the improvements that you made, although we had that high water, it went down fast. It didn't just sit there. It went down as fast as it came up. With the improvements that you have made so far.
It did go down fast.
They said thirteen point two inches of rain. That's what one TV station was.
I don't know what curbs of the plant did official reading, but.
So yeah, about a week ago, we had a three and a half inch of that, and this was probably another three and a half, four inches.
All at once.
Good job. Matt, what do you got?
Couple of things. Um I've seen over lately campers. On on city properties, people living in them. One of them is the house on South Denver. He's got the house gutted. Windows have been out of it since, I don't know, twenty seventeen. Um there's a camper sitting next to it. Is that authorized? Can you do that?
Not sure about that exact situation, but you can have a camper on your property up to six months. It can be extended as long as you're as you're building a home, remodeling a home.
Okay.
That is allowed.
Okay, what if there's no no house being built on the property? Accessory, if using it as accessory structure?
It sounds like it's probably a specific situation.
This is the second one. This is the second one I'm talking about. Property, lot, no house on it, camper, someone living in it.
If you wanna give us the address.
I will. Boyer in Central Pond. I believe Kendra brought this up about a year and a half ago about the pond scum and how bad it's looking. We were told that someone was gonna go down and look at that, try to get those going. Haven't heard anything. Um since the rain it brought to people's attention, uh looking over there. Where are we at with that?
Um yeah, we were gonna talk about that, and it probably was talked about at staff and I don't know if it got dropped or whatever. So we'll put that on the list and talk about it on Thursday and give you guys a report on that as soon as we can.
What about the parking around the hotels? Where did we come out on that?
So the the correspondence that I communicated to the commission was that the it was originated by a complaint. Um and in fact, it is illegal for trucks to park there. Um the police department's practice is to if if they get a complaint, they inform. Hotels that they should communicate that message to the truck drivers. Uh if you all don't want that to occur, then we will need to change the the ordinance to allow parking on the street, but right now it's illegal.
Okay. It what what was the reply from the manager out there? I I you see see this on that email, um but I I'm assuming he replied.
Yeah, I mean, I think he had mentioned that he was going to make contact with the commission at some point to see that that could be changed, but. He he hasn't made any contact since then, but I know.
It is something that should be changed, but. I mean, one of them basically has a sign that says no parking in their parking lot. Because they were under the impression that they could utilize.
The drive, the street.
Yes.
And I would, I mean, and I guess where I I come down on that is that if it's a patron of one of our businesses. Like, I'm I'm cool with that. Like, I I would, I mean, if we can figure out some way to to make that work. But if but if we just say you can park here, you're I don't want, of course, I don't want just semi shoes and all the time, but if it's actual patron to one of our. Our businesses in town, you know, spending bed tax money and sales tax and all that. I'm I'm not against trying to figure out how to accommodate that, but I am against just letting it happen willy nilly. I know there's a guy here up on, you know, North Main that parks parks his truck every every week, I think. Um I'm assuming he has permission to do that, but it's not on the city street, but I just kind of feel. If someone's paying sales tax and bed tax, I think they should try to figure that out if we can, but that's not here or there.
Yeah, I mean, the thing is, it it it's really completely irrelevant if they're paying property taxes or sales taxes or whatever. If the commission wants to allow it on on public or private public right of way, within the public right of way. You all just need to let us know which we'll drive up an ordinance and we'll get it changed. If you don't, then we'll just leave it as it is. Um but that's that's the law. So if a police officer is out and they see someone or they get a complaint. Then they will do just like they do any anytime there's a violation. They will they will issue a ticket. Uh in this case, they issued a. A courtesy notice, so there wasn't even a ticket even issued. Um but that, you know, that's the law. And we've you guys have said it before, we don't want laws that we're not gonna enforce. Well, we enforce the law or we let someone know that there's a law that is on the books and, you know, now we've we've got complaints. So we just need to know how we wanna do it, and then we'll enforce it the way it needs to be enforced. But it goes without saying that even though it's on the books, some people will not get caught. I mean, that's just the nature of the beast. So. Let me know what you wanna do, because I'm I'm hearing one thing, I'm hearing four other people be silent, and I I just wanna know if we need to do an ordinance.
I'm not in favor right now of changing ordinance. I wanna have a bigger discussion about this. I don't know that I was around when this complaint came up. I wanna I wanna have a bigger discussion about this because if we just change a blanket ordinance to allow. That parking on on public right of ways, we need to understand what the unintended consequences that are gonna be, and that is, you know. Maybe parking in areas that are not quite as easily accessible as out by the hotels.
Absolutely.
And so I think it's a bigger conversation, and and I'm willing to have that conversation, but but I'm not I'm not willing to. Be a voice right now to say, go change the ordinance and bring it back to us so we can sign it. So I think I think it's a point of bigger discussion. I think that there's some areas where it may make sense, but just a blanket citywide statement, I'm not I'm not I'm not in favor of that.
Two more things. Um we were authorized an S U P for a gentleman out on out by Hogwild. For the the car shop thing, and we put up the.
Hobby shop.
The the fence. Um in that conversation, it was that his vehicles were gonna be behind the fence and not in front of it. I've never seen that fence not have cars in front of it. I I I complete violation of what he said and what we asked him to do. And so um what it what is the next step on this if he is not going to do what he said?
Um well, I believe that the S U P can be revoked.
Okay, I mean, I I'm I think I this is my this is he is my raw stunt to you. That the guy down on on South Main. I I'm not, I I flat out asked him. And he said the cars are gonna be behind the fence. And so, I mean, I.
I saw him out there the other day too.
I am at a point where I am I am ready to vote to remove it.
Well, I'm going to assume you're going to give him a warning first.
And that's where I'm I'm that but I I wanted to I I I'm at a point now, because I've waited and waited. And it's been six to eight months now since he's he's been in here. And I um I would I would I would like to remove the fact that I'm ready to move to to. Smack his hand. I don't know where that comes from. I don't know if it comes from.
Yeah, and and notice has been given and and he has um been notified.
Oh, he has been notified?
None of the revoking at this point, but. I'd be more than happy to invite him into my office and have that conversation, and then depending on how that situation goes and compliance. We can have that ready to go for the next meeting, and then depending on what put in his court, and if he doesn't wanna comply, you all can take action at your next meeting.
I do take that's I'm just one of five, but I just that's for Russia.
No, I mean, city staff has had several conversations with it. I don't think it would be out outside the realm of, I think, one more and the shot will be heard over the bound. It'll be in his court.
Four strikes and you're out.
It's a COVID enhanced baseball rule.
What else you got? Um the last one is, is I wanna say congratulations to our um high school graduates. That graduated in the most unique way this year. Hopefully, no one else has to experience it, and then these kids have their own. Their own unique experience. Um I've got family members all across the country that are actually being affected by this, including friends and family here in town. So um congratulations, class of twenty twenty, and go take on the world.
So I wanna echo that. Um I got to participate in a couple of kind of little at home at home graduation ceremonies this weekend or graduation celebrations. It is uh. You know, it is something that is uh unique. It's to your point, hopefully, hopefully, we don't have to repeat this again. But our high school graduates, our Butler graduates, um you know, our local kids that really. Uh really strived for some success and 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 met those goals and then weren't able to be fully recognized um at their graduation. I just wanna say congratulations to them and good job and and good luck moving forward as well. Also, to echo what you guys said about city staff has really been troopers through the whole COVID thing. Um and then with the rain event on Friday, uh we're out in force taking care of things. You know, it was crazy because at uh, you know, at seven thirty. The the floodwaters were at their highest, and by seven forty five or eight o'clock, they were gone. So. You know, it did it it was flash flood. It did come quick, and then city staff responded well. Um I have a couple of of items that I just wanted to follow up on. So last at the last meeting, Commissioner Lewis asked about. Had asked to have you guys check in and maybe find a light uh for the statue in North Main Park, the Nick Bedway Senior Statue. Because it sits there on the corner. Um after after Greg mentioned that, the last one, I had someone else kind of mentioned that to me sometimes. If it's just. Dark enough out, it's kind of a, you're not quite sure if it's gonna get right across the street or not. So I just encourage you guys to. Just encourage, I didn't say that, just encourage you guys to maybe check into some sort of solar light or something to to eliminate that statue. Plus, uh it gives us a chance to look at it at night too. And the other question I had was in regards to the property on Country Club Lane. Uh used to be the Moose Lodge. Does it, what what is that? What's that property zoned as? Do we know?
I believe it's office institutional, but.
Thought he, no, he came in and changed it, remember? We changed it to residential. I thought we did. I thought he came in and requested his own, because I was surprised that he'd wanna do that.
Like it was different owners that it it traded hands a few times within the last. I think it's gone a couple directions.
I I I'd like to know what the zoning is on that, because it's my understanding that there are people living there, and I wanna make sure that that's residential residential or that that's appropriate.
Living in the Oldman's Lodge?
That that multiple or are you just someone's living there as a resident?
My unders- I haven't been there. I don't know, but the the information that I'm getting is that there's likely multiple people. Maybe multiple people in the same family, I don't know, but just multiple people. So I'd be curious with that with that zoning is, I wanna make sure that there's. Maybe multiple people in the same family. I don't know, but it's multiple people. So I'd be curious with that, with that zoning is. I want to make sure that they're complying. Yeah, the only other thing that I want to just mention to the public is, you know, we are as a city trying to, trying our best to get some of these things opened back up. We got to see tonight a plan for the city pool. We talked about the Fourth of July fireworks. We got to see a plan for softball and baseball. I anticipate and, and, and the public should anticipate to be receiving additional communication through some avenue, whether it's in the mail or on, on social media or on our website about those plans and to, to please continue watching for that information as it comes out because we've directed city staff to make sure that we're properly communicating with the public on those, those changes and those things that are coming up. And so bear with us. We're, we're really trying our best to get things opened back up and, and get people out there. So just kind of bear with us, be patient. And if you do have concerns or if you have, you know, concerns with the process, just, just politely relay those concerns to, to city staff and they'll do everything they can to address those. So. But patience, patience and understanding is going to go a long way as our staff really tries to work through this and work extra diligently to make it, to make it successful for all of us. So. With that, uh, city manager report.
Um, so some good news. KDOT recently announced their Eisenhower Legacy Transportation Program, which is basically their long-range transportation program. Unfortunately, we didn't give any modernization projects included in that, which is, which are the large new projects, new construction type things. However, Butler County did get two preservation projects, which would be basically millenaries, for example. One of those will not directly, within the city of El Dorado, is right in our back door. And so they will be doing a millenary project on K two fifty-four from the Sedgwick-Buttery County line all the way to the city limits of El Dorado. That project will begin this year, so during this construction schedule and will be completed as well during this year. Although we don't know the specific dates, it'll happen this year. So that's good news as the state continues to invest in transportation infrastructure throughout the state of Kansas. We also received a federal grant through the CARES Act that was recently passed by Congress. Originally, the, the grant was a ninety-ten grant from the FAA, meaning ninety percent federal government, ten percent local government for the runway relighting project. However, Brad, the Public Works Director, told me today that the FAA has agreed to pay for that project a hundred percent. So there will be no local match. That project's bids came in approximately four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It was actually estimated to cost a little bit more than that. So it's good news that the project will actually cost less than it was, was estimated to cost and the FAA will pick up the entire tab for that project. So.
Wow, that's awesome.
I don't know what airports have to do with COVID, but nonetheless, it's good for us because we will get, we will get the entire project paid for. The ori, the city was originally slated to contribute approximately seventy-five thousand dollars to that project and now we'll, we'll get that all free and clear. And that project will, will begin this year, this calendar year. So that, that will begin very soon.
Now, do we get to keep the other money that we were going to use?
Yeah, so the, the ten percent portion of that project was.
We, we had, we have grant money also for the runway that we was going to pay for that because he came and asked for some extra money to upgrade for the lighting to do everything together.
Right, so that's all included in the project.
Okay, so we're still, all, all of our grant money that he was, and he was spending, he was like spending next year's money too, if I remember correctly on that. All of that, we don't get to keep that? I mean, like use that for other projects out there?
So a portion of the FAA grant is entitlement dollars that we receive. And so it would have, was going to originally be a multi-year project.
Right.
But the FAA has agreed to make it a one-year project.
Okay.
So they're basically going to fast track those dollars. And it doesn't, it doesn't hurt our future entitlement dollars. So yes, that would be.
That's where I was going with this. Okay.
Um, with good news comes a little bit of not good news. KDOT and KTA informed the city very recently that it will not be proceeding with the I thirty-five, K two fifty-four, Boyer Road intersection study for the foreseeable future. And that's due to the fact that the KTA's revenues are down sixty-five percent during this COVID situation. So they've put a number of projects on hold, including our study. But they will pick that up as soon as revenues pick back up and they are, they have the dollars to do that. Memorial Day is Monday, so city offices will be closed on Monday. The trash schedule will be shifted just a little bit. Monday's trash routes will be on Tuesday. Tuesday's routes will be on Wednesday and Thursday and Friday's routes will be on Thursday and Friday. Also of note, on next Wednesday, May twenty-seventh, during your work session, we will ask you guys to conduct a public hearing for a, an application from the city to apply for a CDBG program that the federal government is orchestrating through the states. The Department of Commerce has three million, I'm sorry, nine million dollars available for local governments to apply for. These dollars can be used for one of two things. There's an economic development branch and there's a meals program branch. The economic development branch, if awarded, cities can get up to three hundred thousand dollars per application. And those dollars can be used for loans, not, not loans, grants to businesses that may be affected by the COVID-19 shutdown. So you can use those dollars for example, to buy up to sixty days' worth of inventory and a number of other items that are eligible for those dollars. On the other side of the meals program, the city can receive up to three hundred thousand, or up to an amount of money for, to purchase meals for different programs that may be available in your community such as Kids Need to Eat or I know there's a couple of other programs as well. So we will have the public hearing required for that so we can get our application in, assuming you all want to apply. Because the nine million dollars are, is a first come, first served basis. And every city in the state of Kansas has their antenna up and is looking at these funds to help their businesses in their community as well. So we kind of jumped the gun and published a notice so that we could kind of get in, get, get our process moving as quick as we could so we can get ourselves in front of the line as, as fast as we can. So that will be on the twenty-seventh and then we will make the application.
So are we able to gather all the required information we need for this, for this application, the CDBG application? I know we've had to reach out to some partner organizations. Are we getting the information that we need from them?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, El Dorado Inc., Main Street and the Chamber have split out the, the businesses in town. They're going to make direct contact with those businesses to determine eligibility. There's some eligibility requirements. So not every business would be eligible, if the city would receive funds, not every business would be eligible to receive funds from the city. It needs certain criteria based on federal requirements. But they are, they are reaching out to these organizations, these businesses, determine eligibility and if they would be interested in, in doing it because there are certain requirements that you'd have to comply with if you receive these funds.
Yeah, but we are getting the proper cooperation from our partner organizations.
Linda sent out a list today that they're working on splitting up. So I think so.
Okay. What else you got?
That's all I got.
All right. I would take a motion. Anyone want to make a motion to adjourn?
I move adjourn.
Second.
All is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
It's supposed to say a same sign. Motion carries five oh.